How y'all doing? My name is Mark Harling. I've been athletic for eight years now, and I've been the basketball coach and P E teacher here since nineteen eighty-five. I'm excited because there's probably been about four plans for a new high school. Since I've been here, I've been giving core plastic pictures and asked her, what do you think about this? What do you think about that? And like, I really feel like this one is gonna happen. Alright, and that's, that's why I'm here. I like to talk athletic facilities a little bit. I wager to say I've been to more athletic facilities than probably everybody in the room combined.
Alright, and I want to be in the good. Alright, I hope I'm here to see the new one built, but if it takes too long, I might be in another state. However, I will always be a Bruin, class of nineteen eighty-eight, and taught and coached a lot of people in this county. Alright, I got a couple things I'm gonna pitch for and shoot my shot, and I realize that people are coming at y'all with various things that they think they need. And I can't speak for anybody else, but I can speak for athletics, uh, and, and I'd say I'm an expert. The first thing I think that we should strongly consider, and, and I'm going in order, is an auxiliary gym. And a lot of these things y'all don't know, and you wouldn't if you weren't here all the time. Throughout the school day, in that tiny gym, we have three periods where we have two classes in that gym at the same time. Uh, much different when, than when I taught you guys second and third period, and we're in there by ourselves playing the World Series or wiffle ball or whatever it was. Well, now, there's sixty kids in there at one time. Uh, which makes it tough, because a lot of times that's a ninth grade class with a physical training class, and it would be great to be able to spit, split those folks up. Uh, that space would also be great for large groups, uh, if we had a safety issue. An auxiliary gym is, is just, it's not like a regular gym. Uh, there's not bleachers, it's just space. It's four walls and a big space with a basketball court, volleyball court, whatever. It would be a great space for the event of a sa- in, in the event of a safety issue. Could be alternative classrooms for a specific department to collaborate on a large group assignment. You know, whether it's a, you know, the, the, the science teachers collaborating on some kind of, uh, you know, lab or, or what have you. Uh, in the summertime, we have four sports that use that, use our gym for off-season workouts. Uh, and, and that's crammed in a lot of time, and potentially two more if weather forces those inside. We host a variety of camps that would benefit more people. And while camp was in session, other groups could use the auxiliary gym while not, that's not having the camp. It would also allow for larger amounts of participants in the camp as me and volleyball turn people away every year for, for basketball camps. It would also allow, and volleyball camps, it'd also allow us to do a better job splitting as far as, as skill levels go. In the fall and winter, right now, cheer practices in the cafeteria. They have to move the tables, and their practice time gets taken away for other activities. They just lost two weeks in the la- last month for driver's ed. Uh, in the wintertime, and a lot of people don't know this, three basketball teams use that gym for practice every day. The last practice ends at eight forty-five. A lot of times that kid doesn't get picked up until nine fifteen. Then we gotta start the laundry, sweep the floor, cut the lights out, and we're all getting home late. Oftentimes, that kid is not blessed, gets here to school at seven forty-five on that school bus. Then he doesn't have a way to go home and come back for that late practice, so he has to stay at school. And although Hardy's has been a great addition to our community, not necessarily our waistline, but our community, everybody's not blessed with, with the resources to go get dinner at Hardy's before their last practice. So many kids, along with me, are at that school, at this school from seven forty-five until nine fifteen at night. And I mean, I think that's the biggest thing. Uh, uh, the other issue, or the other, two gyms I think gets everybody out by seven. Uh, cheer would have an opportunity to use a bigger space to practice. Uh, maybe a space where they're not moving their equipment, toting their equipment. Um, again, it can be used for weather in spring and fall. Our community is growing. Uh, it's getting bigger every day. Uh, the more people equals more activities. Uh, sports like wrestling, I can see them coming this way, and that space would also give us an opportunity to have things, you know, sports like wrestling and have a safe place for them to practice. And again, I just think it, it benefits everybody. Um, the second thing, and, and I thought Chris, is Chris not here? I thought Chris was coming to, and he was gonna piggyback me on this one. Us, a turf football field, alright, a- and I know that people think that that's a huge expense. It's about two hundred thirty thousand more than a Bermuda seeded football field. Okay, well, you say two thousand, two hundred thirty thousand is a lot. Well, I spend close to seven thousand dollars every year on paint, fertilizer, seed, and herbicide. Not to mention labor, gas, maintenance, the equipment used to cut that field. Other sports would have a place to practice if theirs are underwater or unplayable. With a turf field, football does not need a practice field, because they could practice on the turf every day. And those things, I mean, it's ground-up tires, those things last thirty years before you have to even treat and, and refill them with the ground-up tires that they use to make them soft and spongy. Uh, band football and track would have opportunities to host competitions, combines, invitational meets, and other events that could raise money for our programs. Uh, and again, I said those things, two things are in order. Hey, I'm gonna be greedy, alright? I would love to have both of those things, alright? But I would, I would have to rank auxiliary gym first. Finally, and, and I might've gone over my three minutes, I apologize. As I stated in the beginning, I've been doing this a long time. And I can honestly, and this, and I, I'm not joking, and we make everything look really good. I put lipstick on a pig every Friday night out there, alright, but when the lipstick comes off, it is still a pig. Alright, and we keep our stuff really nice. Like, we do the best we can with what I got, what we have. And I'm gonna tell you, like, when we do get a new gym, I'm gonna miss that gym, man, 'cause I spent, spent some wonderful times in there with paint chips falling, uh, all, all the stuff that we gotta do to maintain it, but I love that place. But I can honestly say that currently we have the worst overall athletic facilities in regards to logistics, security, and size that I've competed in or visited. We had the opportunity to do something really good and have something we're really proud of. Alright, right now, we don't compare ourselves to other people. Alright, I've never heard anybody, any of our people go, man, our field ain't close to what Currituck's is. Our, our weight room or gym isn't anywhere clo- I don't hear that, because we are proud of what we have. However, wouldn't it be nice to hear people from other places talking and say, man, that field at Camden is amazing. That gym at Camden is immaculate. And somebody trying to catch up with us instead of us being fifty years behind everybody else. Thank you for your time. I'm gonna see y'all next month.
Yeah, what's the ideal size of an aux gym?
Uh, basically, probably six feet outside, probably eight feet on the end, six feet on the side of, of good ones that I've seen, enough for, you know, maybe chairs. Uh, so ninety-four feet long by fifty feet wide, add eight to each end and six to each side. And you know what? You know, if you, if you bumped it to twelve feet, we could put portable bleachers, like, flip up, roll in, almost like Grandy's gym, approximately that size. If we did have a wrestling match and a basketball game on the same night, because of some rescheduling or snow or whatever. And again, like, one scoreboard, you know, and, and just basic. You like, you got something. Come on, come on. Hey, and, and, and I also know that this is not all on y'all. I'm not, I, I, I don't think that, uh, Jason's over there crunching numbers and go, oh yeah, we can do that. I know there's a lot of other people involved in this process, but that's just my two cents.
I know it is. I know it is. I, I mean, you said everything I needed to hear.
Okay, great. Thank you all.
Bye, Mark Harling. See you next month, buddy.
Our first spotlight tonight, I'd like to ask Opie Stinson, the principal of Grandy Primary School, and his staff to join me. And, and his staff, there's some of y'all here.
Mr. Lazar, I saved the spot for you right here.
So, Mr. Stinson, Mr. Lazar, staff, Camden County Board of Education would like to recognize Grandy Primary School for being ranked number one in the state among pre-K through third grade and kindergarten through third grade schools for school student achievement. Very good. When we talk about student achievement, I think it's important to keep in mind the steep decline academics suffered as a direct impact of COVID. Because of disruptions caused by the pandemic, the accountability report for the twenty twenty-one, twenty-two school year is the first since twenty eighteen, nineteen to feature all components of the state's accountability framework. The student achievement data for the twenty twenty-one, twenty-two school year are based on analysis of all end-of-grade and in-course tests. The board recognizes that the achievement results for Grandy are a testament of staff's commitment to students and their determination to breach post-COVID academic gaps. The desire and drive of all our students to learn during the best of times and the worst of times, and the support of our district's parents, both staff and students. Devotion can mean many things, but at Grandy Primary School, it means the early building blocks are our youngest students' educational foundation. So on behalf of the board, I'd like to congratulate Grandy Primary's past principal, current principal, and staff for your impressive achievement. It's with your board spotlight tonight. Congratulations. Anybody like making comments? Nope.
Thank you all for your support.
Thank you for your hard work, everything you do. I know Ms. Davis wants to get a picture. Thank you. Congratulations. Mr. Castillo, any of your staff from Camden Early College High School, if you would like to join me at the podium, please?
You can't, you can't stand next to me.
Camden Early College High School is being recognized for excellence tonight, because it is one of the early college high schools in the state that earned a school performance grade of A and exceeded growth for the twenty twenty-one, twenty-two school year. First, I want to say that earning a school performance grade of gra- A is not an easy task, but it will also remind everyone that the twenty twenty-one, twenty-two school year was the third school year with impacts from the pandemic. Letter grades of A through F reflect school performance measured primarily by student performance on the state's end-of-grade and end-of-course exams. Under state law, grades are based on each student's achievement score weight of eighty percent, and each student's, school's students' academic growth weight of twenty percent. The total school performance score is converted to a hundred-point scale and then used to determine a school performance grade of A, B, C, D, or F. So, Mr. Castillo, your message on the website states that Early College will prepare students academically and socially so that they will be college and career-ready. You wrote that you and the Early College staff expect students' best efforts in everything they do, including academics, extracurricular activities, sports, and volunteer services. This seems to have summarized your school's successes. We know you and your staff are exceedingly proud that your students are meeting these values. So on behalf of the Camden County Board of Education, we recognize this achievement is the result of absolute dedication and devotion to the students of Camden Early College High School, and we thank you for the standards of excellence required of your staff and the students, and everyone's obvious commitment to success. So we would like to present you with the board spotlight tonight as well, and say congratulations, and thank you for your hard work.
Thank you. Thank you. Any comments?
Uh, I just wanna thank, you know, we, we're, we don't have Ms. Jackson, Mr. Loggie, and Ms. Jagunia, but also Gwen Stevens played a big part. Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
I would like to ask Ms. Garnon if she would join me at the podium? So I'd like to begin to congratulate Ms. Karen Garnon for having been named Camden County Schools Educator of Excellence for the twenty twenty-two, twenty-three school year. During Ms. Garnon's career, she has served students in special education classrooms from kindergarten through middle school grades. Prior to coming to Camden in twenty eighteen, she taught in Elizabeth City-Pastille County Public Schools for eleven years. Ms. Garnon has been described as a flexible and true team leader who works incredibly hard for her students. Through teaching, she strives to create a community of learners that celebrates all achievements, big and small, as well as instill in young minds that they are all uniquely perfect and possess within themselves something that the world needs. So we'd like to recognize that the state Exceptional Children's Conference during the special program, and her travel and registration will be funded courtesy of the Exceptional Children's Division. So on behalf of the Camden County Board of Education, I thank you for your years of service to some of the most special children. Congratulations on a job well done. Open session to appear.
No one has requested to appear.
A consent agenda. Motion by Ms. Adler to approve the consent agenda, seconded by Mr. Purcell. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Information updates, school safety and security update, Mr. Mike Lawrence.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening. Just a couple little things. We got the second metal detector in, and it's being used, uh, at both schools. We have, uh, started doing some drills in-house, the staff's doing that, we're identifying some issues. With the district safety team, we developed some objectives with that, and we're starting to tackle some different issues with that. I have a, um, evaluation coming up here in a couple weeks with Dr. Farrell, so tell me how I'm doing. And, um, meeting with the sheriff, again, we've been pretty, meeting with him and SROs on a pretty consistent basis, going through any issues that they're having, radio communications, uh, maintenance issues that they're finding or were finding, and these issues, and, and also, uh, things that are working well. Like, somebody, like the football game the other week, we opened up extra places, scanned traffic in to get people in, some different things like that. Any questions? I cannot, Mark did a great job, so it's hard to follow that guy.
Thank you.
Thank you. Discussing of branching minds software, software, Kelly Hargard. And as Ms. Hargard is coming to the podium, I would like to, I think we didn't recognize you at our first meeting that you attended, but recognize you as a part of the Camden County Schools family now as our chief academic officer.
Yes, thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you. Um, so at the last board meeting, the program branching minds was tabled, and the board asked that more research be conducted. For my role, the main focus of my research was what can branching minds do to support a more solid implementation of MTSS across Camden schools from the initial identification of students through writing an intervention plan, and then finally providing those intervention options, and supporting teachers who will be conducting those interventions. That was the lens that I kind of went into that research that was requested. In order to better understand, I conducted some simultaneous research, um, into MTSS as it operates in other districts, and then also a closer look at how it operates here. Um, I reached out to MTS coordinators and my Northeast RISA curriculum and instruction team, um, just asking if they use platforms, how that was going, how they were conducting their MTSS, um, processes and procedures and management. Here in Camden, I met with administrators to just have those same conversations. I wanted an accurate picture of each of those steps and stages. And as a result of the roundtable discussion, we pinpointed a few specific things that would help us have a more efficient and effective MTSS process. I felt that before we really dug into branching minds, I needed to understand MTSS as it was happening here in Camden, because that was the goal behind potentially adopting branching minds. Um, so some things that came out of those conversations and the roundtable discussions, first, we need consistent forms and procedures. For example, parent letters, data collection forms, goals and intervention forms that allow for teacher accessibility. Each school shared their current forms and procedures, and while we did see some carryover, we noted that there was still room for improvement with consistency. And it was also mentioned that the paperwork was cumbersome and sometimes frustrating for teachers and staff during that roundtable discussion. The second and probably most problematic hurdle that was discussed multiple times at each of the levels was the lack of access to research-based aligned interventions for teachers to use once they've identified those areas of weakness. So that was really an important thing that kept coming up. What resource will they use once we pinpoint what we need to serve children with? Um, so with that understanding of those major needs of our district, I began to dig into what branching minds offered. Um, initially, branching minds seemed to have exactly what we needed to help streamline the organizational component. It allows for the interoperability amongst all of our data platforms, uh, meaning that teachers wouldn't have to open multiple programs to pull together an accurate, accurate picture of student needs. Additionally, teachers and administrators could create those plans within the digital documents in the plat- that the platform offers. However, before coming back, um, I knew that I probably needed to dig just a touch deeper. Um, and so I reached out to the company and asked for a demo login to practice creating a plan and see what those interventions would be if I really created a plan using some fake data, but data measures. Um, once I got into it, really looking from the lens of what does Camden need? Will this provide it if I worked through a plan and wanted some interventions for a kid? Uh, I did see how the data collection and paperwork component of branching minds could help streamline the work. However, I also realized that while the program does offer some resources and materials that are readily available for teachers to implement, a large number of the intervention suggestions send you to purchase texts or to purchase programs, or even to purchase teachers pay teachers materials. So the bank was not as robust as I think we initially thought it was, um, before getting into with that demo login. Uh, it was not necessarily as aligned or supportive as I think it could have been. Um, so while I know that we were looking for a way to make MTSS more streamlined and less cumbersome for teachers and staff, I would like to take a little bit of a different route and look at the possibility of spending some of our, the money that we were going to spend on branching minds to build a compensated in-house team um, within our district that can help to take a look at what we have in place and work to build a functioning MTSS system that includes digital forms, um, handbooks at the school level with processes and procedures, and most importantly, an aligned bank of interventions. Um, the work won't happen overnight, it's gonna be a slow and steady process, but it will allow us to build a deeper understanding of an intervention model amongst our staff and create building-level support for other teachers. So the members of the team will understand the process, they'll understand the procedures at a deeper level, because they've been part of building that process. They will be able to support a collective understanding of how to write an intervention goal, how to select and implement a resource from the bank that they helped to build. So we have intelligent, capable, driven teachers in this district, and I really feel that this will help us invest in our teachers and build their capacity, instead of investing in a program that doesn't necessarily provide all of the things that we really need it to provide. So I just wanted to give that update on the research that I found. Is there any questions?
I do.
Okay.
So MTSS is not required by state law, is that correct?
So MTSS is not required by state law, but an intervention model is required by state law.
What are the alternatives to MTSS?
Response to intervention, student response team, and they all are the same. They all are that tiered, one, two, and three, they just have different names. So the state, for the most part, has adopted MTSS as its model, um, and that's embedded in many of the other legislations as options to carry those legislation. So it will say, MTSS will serve as the way that you can do this. So when we're looking at all of the early literacy intervention plans, MTSS is a part of that. So you, you see it embedded in a lot of the other things. Um, it's a framework, it's what we're doing. Tier one is what everybody is going to work every day to do. It's that standards, they're using their standards, they're teaching children, they're looking to differentiate to the best of their ability. It's, we're really at the tier, what do we do with tier two and tier three? And I think that this team, if we build a team, and I've started pulling resources from other districts, really looking at, um, building a bank of standards aligned, so if a student doesn't understand this standard, then here are a bank of resources that I can implement, I don't have to buy something, or I can build it from a program that we already pay for. So I can say, here's an M-class resource that aligns to the student not being able to do that. So, and I, and I think while the project is big, I think it's doable, and I think it's important to invest in building the capacity of the teachers to understand it.
What is the makeup of that group?
And, and I really wasn't going to, like, yeah, no, I, I think that it needs to be well-rounded. We need representation from multiple levels, and I think we need lenses, we need an administrative lens, we need teacher lens, we need E C lens, um, we need people from the academic team, just kind of everybody digging in. I would like for us to, I already started pulling handbooks of districts across North Carolina, and so we could sit at a table and say, okay, these are different elementary handbooks that exist. What, what's good, what's not so good, what does it look like in Camden? it look like in Camden for us to implement? Can we build off of what's already begun? So we're not starting at ground zero. We're finding the good things that already exist, not reinventing the wheel, but we're also not spending time, money, and effort on things that don't move our process forward. So. Anything else? Thank you, guys. Thank you.
Thank you. Our student board member updates. This Alexis McCoy and Lila Formby.
Good evening. My name is Lila Formby. I'm the junior student board member, and I will be presenting on Camden Intermediate School and Grandi Primary. So this year, Camden Intermediate School got off to a great start. There was an amazing turnout at the outdoor family movie night with Grandi Primary School. Everyone enjoyed the movie, and this event definitely brought the community together. The CIS book fair began on October 10th and is going great so far. However, the big thing this month is the Harvest Fun Run on October 31st. It will be a fun activity to bring the community together for Grandi Primary School. This year, Grandi Primary is ranked number one among K-3 grade schools, and they celebrated this by hosting a lunch for the staff. On October 13th, students and staff will dress for their favorite book character to promote reading and the opportunity to purchase books at the book fair. October 14th is a community helper day where more than 30 volunteers come to share their professions with the students. During the week of October 23rd to 31st, Grandi will celebrate Red Ribbon Week, and each day, students will be able to participate in a variety of ways to stop drugs and bullying. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, everyone. My name is Alexis McCoy. I am a senior here at Camden County High School, and I will be giving a report on the middle school, the high school, and the early college. The middle school has started off well. The Beta Club, Cup Council, and FFA have been active this year and have plans for events throughout the school year. Additionally, they had their first fellowship of Christian athletes meeting. The Drama Club is in full production and rehearsal mode for their upcoming performance of The Christmas Princess on December 2nd and 3rd in the CMS auditorium. The middle school hosted a blood drive on Monday, October 10th. This was a huge success, and they surpassed their goal and received enough donations to potentially save 75 lives. The volleyball and soccer teams both had successful fall seasons. The volleyball team won the regular season conference championship and will be the number one seed for the conference postseason tournament. Soccer has had a great season also and will be the fourth overall seed for the conference postseason tournament. Both teams will host for their first round of the conference playoffs. The cub football team has shown improvement this year and will participate in their bowl game on November the 2nd. The CMS PTSO is hosting a haunted house and trick-or-treat on October 22nd. For the high school, this past week, we had a mandatory teacher workday, and the Camden County High School staff participated in staff development led by Ms. Haggard. The administrative team is excited about the direction the school is headed in in regards to student engagement. Tomorrow, all seniors at Camden County High School will be staying during the Bruin Success Period. We will have a guest speaker that is scheduled to come and talk about goal-setting and life after high school. Ms. Clemmons, our guidance counselor, will be helping seniors get ready for College Application Week, and the administrative teams plan to discuss senior events for the 2022-23 school year. The Coast Guard JRTC program at the high school is hosting their first annual military ball on November 5th, and they are taking the plans and the actions to make that successful for our first year. Some upcoming things regarding sports, football season has gone good, and they are having their homecoming game October 20th. We also have a pep rally that day at the high school, which has been the first one in a couple of years, two or three years since we've been able to have one because of COVID. So this has been really, really exciting. The SGA has been planning it and getting hyped, and it should be a really, really fun event for the whole school to come and together and kind of compete. The band competition has a band competition on October 15th. The cross-country conference for volleyball and cross-country is October 19th at Pasco Tank. Senior night for football is the 24th, and senior night for soccer is October 26th. For Camden County Early College, application week started October 17th through the 21st, and they have a field trip planned for Health Science Focus at the COA Elizabeth City campus on October 18th. Waffle Wednesday for teachers is October 19th, and the pre-ACT is scheduled now for November 2nd, or for, yeah, November 2nd. We have another COA Elizabeth City field trip for the freshmen on November 4th. Thank you.
Thank you for those presentations.
Ms. Norfleet has provided a financial update as customary each month. Does anybody have any questions for Ms. Norfleet? Seeing no, we'll move to the action agenda. Letter support. Dr. Farrell?
Yeah.
So in 2019, the State Board of Education approved the NC Collaborative Guiding Framework for Early Literacy Education. That framework consists of nine core elements, one of which is training on the science of reading. Science of reading is an evidence-based reading instruction approach that addresses the acquisition of language, phonological and phonemic awareness, phonics and spelling, fluency vocabulary, oral language, and reading comprehension. In April 2021, under the READ to Achieve legislation, it is spelled out that every kindergarten through fifth-grade teacher must be trained and equipped with the knowledge and skills to apply the science of reading, stating the direct correlations between third-grade reading and future academic success, graduation, and college and career readiness. Letters, which stands for Language Essentials for Teachers of Reading and Spelling, is the program that was contracted by the state of North Carolina to fulfill the training requirements for all teachers, grades K through five and sixth here in Camden due to our unique intermediate school situation. Letters is organized into eight units that will span across the next two years, four units this year, and then four units next year. Each unit is broken down into eight weeks of study, and within each week, teachers will interact with online coursework, teacher reading material, they have a teacher course manual, bridge to practice, which is application of their learning with students, and quizzes to assess their understanding. At the end of the eight weeks, the teachers receive six hours of professional development virtually or hopefully eventually face-to-face, the Letters team will be able to come here, from that Letters team. They just had their first training on October 10th. They had three hours in the morning, and then they had an hour break, and then they had another three-hour session in the afternoon with Letters online. Outside of the live training and some of those classroom application opportunities, the majority of the work for the Letters implementation is done off-contract time. Teachers have shared with Dr. Farrell and the cabinet through TAC as well as through their administrators that while they see the value and recognize the opportunity for their own personal growth as educators, the amount of time that Letters takes to do with fidelity is overwhelming. The approximate time spent outside of contract time for each eight-week unit is around 20 hours. At TAC, Dr. Farrell asked the representatives from GPS and CIS to please seek teacher input regarding ideas for some relief. We also began to put our heads together as a cabinet to brainstorm ideas. The majority of the suggestions that came back were focused around needing time to complete the work and also the possibility of monetary compensation. We've put together a Letters relief package that we hope will address both of those.
PRC 085 is for literacy intervention. The purpose for this PRC is to provide literacy intervention funds for K-3 students as required by general statute and section law. The fund shall also be used to support Letters professional development for K-5 eligible public school teachers. The formula for these funds isn't very clear in the allotment policy manual. The funding formula is an amount for K-3 ADM, but it doesn't give the amount for the Letters part, of course. But when it comes to Letters, the allowable uses for that PRC are to provide substitute pay for K-5 teachers with an 015 elementary education K-6 license to attend Letters training on an instructional day, or you can provide stipends to teachers to attend training outside of the instructional day and/or school calendar days. So with the time that is taken for the Letters training, Dr. Farrell and cabinet are committed to paying the maximum amount allowed out of this PRC as a stipend for the time that has been spent and will be spent during the fall to complete Letters training outside of the school day. The allocation should be dropping at the end of October, so I'm hoping to bring a plan in November that will actually have how much the state is giving us that we can put towards that stipend, but at least that would help for what they're having to do over the summer that some attended trainings as well as everything they're doing outside of their day to do Letters training. So that's the monetary piece.
Did I understand you correctly that we don't know how much money we will be getting from the state?
No, because they never gave us an ADM. They just said it, part of it is a K-3 ADM, but they didn't say what that dollar amount was per student. But then it's also $165 per state-funded teacher who attends facilitated Letters. So it's like several things put together, but they never have said it's $100 per kid, you know, per ADM. They've never given that figure, so I honestly do not know until it hopefully is supposed to drop at the end of October. So, you're welcome.
My part involves the second semester for the teachers that are doing the Letters training. We're hoping to be able to add early release days every other week from February through May. It would involve seven early release days that we would be able to use, or the teachers would be able to use, for the excessive outside work that they have to do. So in the calendars that you have, if you look at the orange indicators from February, March, April, and May, you can see that we're adding in seven early release days. That's three and a half hours per day. And so the formula, again, I'm not going to read the whole thing because you hear it every single year, but the formula is also on the page that you should have received, but we were able to work it in so that we have enough instructional time to meet the needs of the teachers and also have enough instructional hours. So it ends up being that we will have at the traditional calendar, 1,083 instructional hours and 1,025 are required, and then for the early college, they will have 1,079 instructional hours for the school year. And the difference is, they don't get the May release day because they get out of school early. So there's a difference there for them. Any questions?
Do you know off the top of your head what the difference in instructional hours in Semester One versus Semester Two total?
In my file I do, in my office.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
I was just wondering if there was any significant difference there for high school that's on semesters versus the rest of the schools that are year-round?
It usually comes out pretty close. So it's almost in half, but I don't want to say unless I have, and I don't mind emailing that to you all.
Okay.
I'll get that and email it to you.
Thank you.
Anything else?
So for tonight, my recommendation will be for the time part of the Letters relief package, where we will add those early release days, February, March, April, and May, to provide time for teachers to work on Letters training. And of course, that's a change to the academic calendar, which you all approved, so that would require your approval.
Motion by Ms. Idlet to approve the superintendent's recommendation for revised calendar for 22-23 school year for Camden County Schools and Camden Early College. High school. Executed by Mr. Purcell. Is there any further discussion? All in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item B, December 5th board meeting. Meeting location, Superintendent Farrell.
At our last Board of Education meeting, you all changed the, voted to change the time of the meeting, the December meeting, and I neglected to bring a recommendation to you to change the location so that we are meeting at the library meeting room in the new county building.
Are they asking us to do that?
No. It's really to, we're going to be there for the swearing-in and the commissioners' meeting, and then we would leave and drive to another location to do our meeting, and then we would leave and drive back over there to do the joint meeting, lunch and the joint meeting with the commissioners. So it just reduces travel time for the Board of Education. And there's a small meeting room just out, that's part of the actual library, that's not the community room.
Whatever you all want to do.
I like our own space, but I'll do whatever.
You're not going to be there, but whatever, you just come on with me.
You might be. You just might be on the other side.
Yeah.
Well, we have to have action to change the meeting location because we have it on our calendar as already advertised.
Was it advertised now at Central Office?
Yes. Usually have it in Dr. Farrell's offices.
That's usually the meeting that we have the audit, the financial audit, but that's already been done since we changed the audit firms. So the agenda is yet to be set, but...
If we don't take any action, it just stays at the Central Office and...
Correct.
The time's already been changed.
Time's already, yes, time's already been changed.
More or less work on anybody?
Not for that particular meeting necessarily, I wouldn't think. We're going to be, either way, we'd have to set up for our meeting either in the library community room or in my office, and then we'll have to break that down to set up in the community room for the joint meeting with commissioners.
It's up to me. It's up to us. Seeing no action, we will have the meeting at the Central Office as advertised. Superintendent's recommendation from closed session, employment of personnel.
My recommendation is that you approve the personnel report as presented by Ms. Davis in closed session.
Motion by Ms. Idlet to approve the superintendent's recommendation for employment as presented by Ms. Davis in closed session. Executed by Mr. Purcell. Is there any discussion? All in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Announcements, North Carolina School Board Association Annual Conference will be held Monday, November 14th through Wednesday, November 16th, 2022, at the Sheridan Four Seasons in Greensboro, North Carolina. December 5th, have the swearing-in ceremony of the newly-elected board members. It will be Monday, December the 5th, in the meeting room in the new county building beginning at 8:30 a.m. Reminder, our December regular board meeting will be Monday, December 5th, beginning at 10 a.m. in the Central Office. And a December Board of Education joint meeting with the county commissioners, Monday, December 5th, 12 noon, and for lunch, and our joint meeting at 12:30 in the library meeting room of the new county complex. And the Board of Education will hold this holiday gathering on Monday, December 5th as well, at 5 p.m. at Cypress Creek Grill. Anybody have any future agenda items, any other business to be presented before the board? Seeing none, I entertain a motion that we recess open session to return to closed session. Motion by Dr. Banks that we recess open session to return to closed. Executed by Mr. Purcell. All in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carried. We're back in closed session. Thank you everyone for coming tonight. Any further action?